Welcome to the members and officers here. Welcome to the... There is actually nobody in the public gallery, but also welcome to people who may be watching this on the webcast. The meeting today is open to the public, and we have received one petition from one member of the public and several questions from two members of the public. Please, could I request that mobile phones and other such equipment are switched to silent mode so as not to disturb the conduct of the meeting? There is no fire test planned for today. If there is an emergency evacuation, please take instruction from the town hall staff. The assembly point is Tudor Square. I now ask each member to introduce themselves in turn, and then I'll ask the officers to introduce themselves as they speak. My name is Richard Williams. I'm a member of the Stannington Ward, and I'm Chair of this committee.
Yeah, good afternoon. councillor Alan Hooper, councillor for the West Ecclesfield Ward.
Good afternoon. Barbara Masters, councillor for Ecclesfield Ward, substituting for councillor Rob Rice.
Good afternoon. councillor Tony Downing, a member for Mossborough Ward.
Councillor Karen McGowan, member for Burley Ward.
Councillor Janet Riddler, member for Stockbridge and Apodan, and also deputy chair of this committee.
Councillor Bernard Little, councillor for Walkley.
Marion Elliott, Green councillor for Leedis Valley.
Thank you very much. Do we have any apologies for absence?
We do, Chair. Thank you. We have councillor Denise Fox and councillor Robert Rees. Thank you.
Thank you. And councillor Masters will be substituting for councillor Rees. There's no substitute for councillor Fox? You're not expecting one?
No, sorry, councillor Williams. No, we don't have a substitute this time.
Okay, thank you. Item three on the agenda is exclusion of the public and press, and there is a closed part to the report, but item thirteen in the agenda, which is not available to the public and press because it contains exempt information described in paragraph three of Schedule twelve A of the Local Government Act nineteen seventy-two, as amended, relating to the financial and business affairs. The committee are therefore asked to formally exclude the public and press with a discussion on this item to allow for consideration as a sensitive matter. Again, it's one of those ones where it's part of a bigger item, so if you feel you're going to be asking a question that might fall into this, please could you advise me and we will clear the gallery? And do the webcast? Thank you. Item four is declarations of interest. If any members here wish to declare an interest, please say now. That's a no. We'll now go to item five, as minutes of the previous meeting. And I'll take this page by page, starting with page eleven in the papers. Page twelve. Page thirteen. And page fourteen. Okay, thank you. Is that agreed? Thank you very much. As I said, item five is public questions and petitions. The first petition is from Sarah Saunders, who's not attending, but it's about access to Mearsbrook Park toilets. The petition contains sixty-seven signatures. It started on the thirty-first of May twenty twenty-three and closed on the twelfth of July twenty twenty-three. The details described by the lead petitioner are: We'd the undersigned petition the council to either allow daily access to the public, for the public, to the buildings in Mearsbrook Park, building at top with car park or pavilion at the bottom, to allow them to use the toilet facilities there or provide public toilets near the playground, either in the form of permanent or a couple of well-maintained portaloos. The park is heavily used by parents and families and many others who just can't make it back up this big hill when caught out and can't afford to go to the cafe and buy something just to use the toilet. It would be a huge asset which would be appreciated by all, even if it just allowed to use one toilet in the building at the top. There's nothing worse than, I quote, busting for the loo but not being able to go due to screaming children who won't leave the playground fast enough so you can make it. There's a toilet in the wall garden that can only be accessed at times when it is open to the public. There are toilets in the other buildings, but we can't access them. In response to that petition, firstly, I would like to note thanks for the petition to all sixty-seven people who signed it. In response, I say thank you for your petition regarding toilets in Mearsbrook Park. Toilets are an important part of the green spaces, as we know, and facilitate people being able to visit our green spaces and potentially stay longer than they might otherwise. We are reviewing the arrangements in Mearsbrook Park in our different areas and buildings to see whether there are options to provide toilet facilities more regularly in the park. We hope this will be possible, but need to make sure before we can do so safely. Councillor Elliott, I believe this is in your ward.
If I could just say something on this because it's my ward, is that all right, Chair? Thanks. So, yeah, it's my ward. Thank you to the petitioner for bringing this, and I am equally frustrated with the lack of public loo in the park. There are several buildings in the park with toilets, and some are open some of the time, but none of them are open to park users on a consistent basis with publicised opening hours. So it's good to hear that council officers are looking into it, and I've also had conversations with some of the different groups using the spaces in the park to see if there's a workable solution. I'm happy to support the petitioner, and they're very welcome to contact me as their ward councillor.
Thank you. Okay, we have two sets of public questions.
Can I just comment on...
Yeah, very briefly, because it's...
Yeah, just to comment on that. Is there... Well, a question as well. Is there any reason why the people that run the cafe or own the cafe won't allow people just to go in to use the loo just to make things easier for people? Because obviously, people are visiting the park, and I would assume that they were at some point, some of them would go in and use the cafe anyway. Thank you.
Okay, I don't know an answer to that, Tony, but I'm sure the officers will be looking into it. Okay, if we can continue. The first set of public questions was by Janet Smith, Friends of Hillsborough Park, who is not attending. And as a note, she says: The main grass areas in Hillsborough Park, not just the main large field, remain fenced off and are likely to remain so for several weeks. This means that a large part of the park will have been inaccessible to the public for over three months. Sheffield City Council have already confirmed that tram lines will take place in Hillsborough Park in twenty twenty-four because tram lines operate on an eighteen-month cycle. With that in mind, her first question is as follows: Are there currently any limits in terms of the level of damage the area affected and how long the area remains inaccessible while remedial work is done? To how much damage an event can do to a park before that and similar events are stopped from happening in the future? The answer simply is no, there is no limit, as this is hard to quantify. However, the council has given its commitment to learning lessons from this year's event and not allowing this level of damage to happen again. If no such limits exist, will they... This is question two. If no such limits exist, will they be put in place before tram lines twenty twenty-four? Please see the answer to question one. In addition, our strategy for twenty twenty-four will be prevention rather than rectifying after the event. And her third question: If limits were in place and tram lines breached those limits in twenty twenty-four or subsequent years, would the need to give tram lines eighteen months' notice mean that the festival could take place for a further year irrespective of the damage caused? This is a hypothetical question that cannot really be directly answered because limits are not in place. Tram lines have an obligation to reflect, to rectify damage at their own costs, and they have fulfilled these obligations. Our second question is Andy Chaplin, who I believe is also part of Friends of Hillsborough Park. By agreeing to tram lines in Hillsborough Park, the council has approved in sixteen days of construction and generated noise and three days of music at seventy-five decibels. What the council, not tram lines, give back to the residents are Hillsborough in compensation for this disruption. As with any major event, there is unavoidable disruption, and council works closely with its events partners in the case tram lines reduce disruption as far as possible for residents. Of the customers who attended the twenty twenty-three event over the three days, sixteen point five per cent had an address registered in the S six area. This is in addition to those who received tickets through the resident scheme, meaning that over eight thousand people attended from the Hillsborough area. In twenty twenty-three, sixteen hundred and fourteen free or discounted tickets were distributed, an increase of sixteen per cent from the previous year, at a cost of a hundred and seventy-one thousand four hundred and forty pounds to the festival. Since its move to Hillsborough, tram lines have donated over five hundred and sixty thousand pounds worth of tickets to Hillsborough residents. Tram Lines has parking schemes in place to mitigate disruption to residents, holds residents' drop-in sessions, and also provides a dedicated residence webpage. Question two: Will the council increase the fees to tram lines to use Hillsborough Park by two hundred thousand pounds per year, given that tram lines could easily recoup that on ticket prices? I see sell that well in advance. The answer: The fee is and will be negotiated on a commercial basis and in consideration of other similar events. Question three: Will the council also increase the fee by a further hundred and fifty thousand pounds on the basis that tram lines could recoup that by not giving away residents' tickets? The answer: The council would not advocate for tram lines ending the resident ticket scheme as this helps to mitigate some of the disruption felt by local residents. And the final question, question four: Will the council insist on re-entry in order to boost the economic benefit to the local economy? We know that some people who go to tram lines need to re-enter the festival. In twenty twenty-two, nine hundred and twenty-nine requested to re-enter. Nine hundred and sixteen were granted, thirteen were denied. In twenty twenty-three, the number of requests dropped to five hundred and eighty-seven, and twelve were denied. Those written answers will appear on the website and will be sent back to the questioners. Thank you. Item six is members' questions. I've received none, so we can move on to item seven, which is the work programme.
Thank you, Chair. In the main agenda pack, on page fifteen, that is where the work programme begins. And at the top of page sixteen, we have a set of recommendations that we will be asking for the committee to agree. On page seventeen, under section two point two, that refers to the training, skills and development so far this committee. And in appendix one on page eighteen, part one, that does show any removed, new or moved items with an explanation in the notes section of where that's gone to or why it's been removed. Then if we leaf over on to page twenty, appendix three, that is the agenda items for forthcoming meetings which have been scheduled to date. So what I would like to do is pass back to Chair and ask for those recommendations at the top of page sixteen to be agreed, please. Thank you.
Right, the recommendations are, and I will read them for the record, that the committee's work programme, set out in appendix one, be agreed, including any additions and amendments identified in part one. That consideration be given to the further additions or adjustments to the work programme presented as part two of appendix one, and that members give consideration to any further issues to be explored by officers for inclusion in part two of the appendix one of the next work programme, the potential addition to the work programme. Is that agreed? Okay, that's unanimous, agreed? Yeah?
It's not a question or anything. It's just to say a big thank you for staff because we've got an area about the training and skills development, and I know a lot of work's gone into all the visits that we've done recently. I know I haven't been able to make all of them, but the ones I have gone on have been excellent. So just thank you to all the staff for the time.
Thank you, that's duly noted. Yeah, and I'd like to also repeat that, thanks. We're now moving to the formal decisions, and in fact, we're going to move item eleven up. This is the budget monitoring, so that the officer doesn't have to sit through the rest of the committee meeting. She's more than welcome to do so, but if you would like to come and introduce yourself, please, and then make your report.
Thank you, Chair. Good afternoon, everyone. My name's Chloe Parker. I'm senior finance manager, supporting the neighbourhoods and city futures portfolios. So the purpose of the report that's been brought to you today is to summarise the quarter one twenty-three twenty-four position and also a brief summary of the medium-term financial analysis that was presented to the Trasian Resources Committee on the seventh of September. As at the end of quarter one, the general fund is forecasting an overspend of seventeen point six million against a net revenue budget of around four hundred and eighty-seven million, as approximately three point six per cent. In twenty-one twenty-two, we set aside seventy million of general fund reserves to support a financially sustainable position, of which thirty million remains as we came into this financial year. The current forecasted position means that we will only have around thirty million left going into future financial years. You can see in the report that we break down the forecast position further into one-offs and under-delivery of budget implementation plans, or BIPS, and this contributes to an underlying overspend of around twenty-five million pounds. The key drivers of this are outlined in the report. The position for this committee can be found in table one point seven point one, and the committee is forecasting to be around naught point three million pounds overspent with an under-delivery on the agreed BIPS of naught point two million. The key factors contributing towards this position again are outlined in the report. In addition, the report also summarises the medium-term financial analysis and the plans for budget setting between one point six point six and point eight. It should be noted that the target for budget savings for next year for this committee is naught point four million pounds. The next report summarising the financial position for this financial year will come in December and will summarise the quarter two results. I'm happy to take any questions if anyone has any.
Thank you very much. Do we have any questions? No? In that case, thank you very much. If we're all happy to accept that report, then that's a unanimous decision. Thank you. We're now on to item eight, which is libraries' approach to collections and staff management. Again, could I ask the officers to introduce themselves for the benefit of people watching us at home?
Hi, I'm Hilary Coulson, Head of Libraries, Archives and Information Service.
And I'm Alison Joby. I'm the Central and Collections Manager.
Good afternoon. So today, we're bringing a report on the Libraries' Collection Management Framework to committee for approval. So the document attached to the report sets out how the Sheffield Library Service selects, manage and disposes of its collections. Essentially, that's our stock, which includes both electronic and hard copy materials, so books, newspapers, magazines. The approach that we're setting out isn't new or changing, but we do recognise that we haven't previously documented that, and therefore we want to ensure that our approach is kind of open and transparent. That's really the reason for bringing it to committee now. So the selection and management of the stock for libraries falls within our statutory duty to provide a comprehensive and efficient library service, specifically around kind of comprehensiveness in terms of keeping adequate levels of stock. The framework covers the Sheffield libraries that are run by the city council, as well as the five co-delivered libraries, because we purchase stock on their behalf. As the report sets out, the eleven associate libraries are influenced by the framework because they have access to our library catalogue, but we recognise that all volunteer-run libraries will kind of manage and maintain their own stock. So I'm not going to go through all of the detail of the attached appendix, but if I just kind of give a high-level overview. So within the appendix, we wanted to kind of set out the purpose of the framework, and that's really to guide library staff and customers about the principles. So about how we acquire, discard or reject items within the catalogue. As part of our framework, we set out in section seven around stock collection that the library service is part of the North West and Yorkshire Book Consortium. So that covers how we buy stock. The collections framework is about what we choose and how we select it. So on page forty of the agenda pack, paragraph eight point four sets out the stock selection criteria, and that is based on a range of criteria such as content, quality and anticipated demand. So the framework also sets out on page forty-one around section nine and section ten around our approach to exclusions and any kind of stock that may be deemed controversial. So for this, we rely heavily on the guidance by SILIP, which is the Chartered Institute of Library and Information Professionals around intellectual freedom, and also our stock selection criteria. So to make sure that we maintain and provide a comprehensive range of stock, we wouldn't exclude materials just because they were deemed controversial. Later on, within the framework... Sorry, I'm just going to get the right page. So on page forty-four, we also set out around the withdrawal and disposal of stock. So that is dependent on its condition and its demand. And where stock is no longer required by the library service, we may offer that for sale. So that could be directly to our customers, or it could be for companies that collect books and other materials. As such, we are kind of recommending that the committee approve and endorse the collection management framework in the appendix, but more than happy to take any questions on that.
Do we have any questions? Councillor... I'll take councillor Hooper.
Thank you, Richard. My question is about the withdrawn disposal of stock. Are there any preferences where those books go? Is there... You know, where is the demand coming from?
So in terms of looking at demand, we would look at how our books were issuing across the city. Before we considered withdrawing the stock, we would look to put the stock in a place where we think it will lend at higher volume. So we move stock around the city where we think it's likely to lend more. Withdrawal is where there is either very low demand or where actually our stock isn't in lendable condition anymore. So for kind of heavily used stock, actually, the book deteriorates, and therefore we'd be taking into account the condition of it. And quite often, that's when we would withdraw it.
Councillor Hooper?
Isn't that a question? It's just a thank you. Previous to this report coming here, we had the visit to the libraries and the archives, and we also had the briefing by Alison. Thank you very much. I think both those two explain the content of this, and I think you probably won't get any questions because we've been through all the briefings. We know what's happening, but thank you very much.
Thank you, councillor Masters.
Thank you. And it's curiosity. I mean, you mentioned about controversial content. Do you get many requests to buy controversial stuff? Or requests to remove what some people find controversial? This is curiosity.
I don't think we get requests to kind of either buy or remove. Quite often, we, probably on a monthly basis, maybe kind of every other month, we are kind of asked whether we have any trigger warnings or anything like that across our stock. We don't, and that is in line with other library authorities. I think for us, we recognise that what is controversial is a perception and an opinion. And actually, our role as a library service is to provide access to as wide a range of material as possible. So that's why we wanted to make sure it was in the collections framework, so really for openness and transparency. But no, we don't normally get asked to either buy or kind of remove it. We just get asked how we manage it.
Thank you. That answers the question. Thanks very much.
Councillor McGowan?
Yeah, it's just a request, really. Because if somebody was looking at this report, they wouldn't realise we've got volunteer libraries as well. And I know this... One thing is, will this report not impact on them, but be for them as well? And secondly, even if it's not, if we could list all our libraries in Sheffield, even if we say they don't come under this, I just think it gives a true reflection of we've never closed a library in Sheffield, and it's something we should be really proud of, and to show every library, because it looks here that I haven't got any libraries in my ward, and I've got two. So it'd just be nice to see all libraries represented, and those volunteer ones do a fantastic job as well. But I'd like to know, does this... Will this have anything for them? Thanks.
Thank you. So in terms of the stock that we kind of select and manage, it has a direct impact for the ones that we run as a council and also for our five co-delivered libraries because we kind of purchase stock on their behalf, although they are staffed by volunteers. The city council purchased this stock. For our eleven associate libraries, two of which will be in the Burley Ward, then it influences them because they have access to our library catalogue. So therefore, what their customers can kind of reserve and get transported into kind of libraries, associate libraries, is influenced by it. But we do recognise that the volunteer-run libraries will maintain and manage their own separate stock. So there is an influence, but it doesn't actually govern what they do. But I take your point. And actually, on the appendix, what we've tried to do is say how we select stock into our libraries that we provide for, but actually, we could reflect the libraries that maintain and manage their own stock, and therefore actually it's about access to the catalogue. So, yeah, we can make that update, of course.
Is there any further questions or comments? No, in that case, I mean, I would just want to agree with councillor McGowan. I think the voluntary libraries do an excellent job in supporting the entire library service around the city. That's a good point. In that case, I'll go to the recommendation, and that is to approve and endorse the content in the library collection management framework. Is that all agreed? Right, that's unanimous. Thank you. Thank you very much. Item nine is amendment to bereavement services fees and charges. This is probably one of the most unusual amendments I've come across. If you could introduce yourself, please, Ellie.
Hello, I'm Ellie Fraser, Head of Bereavement and Chronial Services. Unusual, as very polite. Slightly embarrassing would be another way of stating it. I'm here because we, for those who weren't members of the committee back in March, we came to the committee with a report and a request which was approved to increase bereavement services fees and charges. That report was to increase all fees by four per cent with a number of exceptions which were described in the report and discussed at the committee, one of which was to introduce a charge for coffins of a certain size. The size should have read between six hundred millimetres up to seven hundred and sixty millimetres, fairly standard coffin size. I'm afraid there was a typographical error, which we noticed after the event, which said coffins of between six hundred mil and up to seven thousand six hundred mil in width, which is quite large. The... So I'm here today to request approval to revert to the intended decision of seven hundred and sixty mil. And just to add that because we hadn't realised the error, it has always been advertised and charged at the correct size and the correct fee.
I'm duty-bound to ask if anybody has any questions. No. And I don't think we need comments, but thank you. So the recommendation is to note the typographical error in the report on bereavement services fees and charges, considering on the thirteenth of March twenty twenty-three, which the width of the coffin price, a hundred and twenty-five pounds, was referred to as six hundred millimetres up to seven thousand six hundred millimetres in width, and to authorise the correction to coffins over six hundred millimetres up to seven hundred and sixty millimetres in width at a hundred and twenty-five pounds. Is that agreed? That's unanimous. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, item ten was community champions. I've actually been advised by officers that this item was asked to be placed in the agenda in error. A pre-existing authorisation was in place, meaning that there was no requirement to bring a paper. But I would say, though, that the officers are going to produce a briefing note just so we know exactly what community champions are. And that will go out separately to this meeting. And that will go out separately to this meeting. That's it. Okay. We shall move on to, we've done item eleven, so we'll move on to updates and briefing items. The first of which is the sports improvements capital project update.
Hello, everyone. I'm Kate Clark. I'm the Service Manager in the Sport Leisure and Events team. And I'm here today to give you an update on the sports capital improvement projects that our team is currently working on. I have got some slides up, so we can put some photos up for you as well. But the report we circulated did have some images in it. The capital projects that our team is involved in mainly relate to the playing pitch strategy and the implementation of that, so improving pitches and ancillary facilities across the city and also projects using sports and national governing body related funding. So those are the projects I'm going to update on today. Obviously, Parks and Countryside are also carrying out numerous capital projects within parks, which aren't part of my update today, but we work very closely together on those projects. So the first project I'm going to update on is Woodburn Road Football Facilities. This is a project which is currently on site. We've got a two point one million pound grant from the Football Foundation to refurbish the football facilities at Woodburn Road, which includes the refurbishment of a two-storey pavilion to create new cafe, reception, meeting room, multi-use, sorry, multi-faith prayer room, and refurbish the toilets and changing facilities within the pavilion. That pavilion, when complete, will be used by the football users, but also is available to Sheffield Hallam's Athletic Stadium users as well. So it's a shared use between the football and the athletics community. The Football Foundation grant's also helping to refurbish the pitches, the artificial grass pitches on the site to create one seven v seven pitch and six five v five pitches, which will be a test bed for piloting new artificial grass surfaces for the Football Foundation, which is looking at the sustainability of those grass pitches. Work started in May on the refurbishment and the pitches are due to be complete in the next sort of, sort of later in September, no, sorry, October, losing track. And the pavilion is due to be complete in November. And we're currently working with a range of stakeholders in the County FA to develop a programme of use, which includes coached activities, turn up and play sessions and working with some youth organisations in the local area to put on activities as well. And once complete, Woodburn Road will be the fourth football hub alongside Graves, Thorncliff and Westfield. And will be operated by Leisure United. The next slide is also Woodburn Road showing the pictures. So the work's coming close to completion there on the pictures. You can see the kind of transformation that's going on on site. Okay, the next project is passing across Sports Pavilion, oh, sorry, Sports Hub. We've just completed a phase one of refurbishment to the pavilion on that site, which has brought that back into use. That was funded by the, created by Sportingland Funding from Rugby League World Cup last year and also some section one O six funding. We've also carried out some pitch improvements and these, this work's allowed the football clubs and rugby clubs to return to site. We're also working with Sheffield Wednesday Community Programme, who will be using the refurbished pavilion for alternative provision and also to run their active three football project. So those pieces of work were completed in July and we're just doing the finishing touches at the moment, working with the lack to do some signage and some redecoration internally. We've also got on site at the moment a new Cruyff Court on one of the existing ball courts. If you can move the slider on again, please. Sorry, that's not worked very well. I was trying to show you an area of where it was on site. But on passing across at the moment, there's three courts and one of those is being refurbished into a Cruyff Court, which is funded by the Johan Cruyff Foundation and also some section one O six funding as well. That's due for completion in the next few weeks and will provide a new playing surface, new lighting and new fencing to that court. And again, will be used through the active by football programme as well as the local community. The next phase for passing crosses is to look at a phase two refurbishments for the pavilion, looking at remodelling the changing facilities and the social space in that pavilion. And we'll be working with the Football Foundation to progress an application for that. We'll also be looking at improvements to the car park facilities and further improvements to the lower pitches on that site. Next slide, yes. We've also got some funding from the Johan Cruyff Foundation for a second Cruyff Court in Burngree. And we're currently working at the moment to do feasibility work within Osgood Thot Park to hopefully progress a Cruyff Court at that location. We're currently doing the necessary surveys and initial design and cost options. And then we'll be doing some local consultation with local schools, residents and the youth club on the site as well. Because the location for the court is next to where the pavilion is sited, the youth club use on the site. Next slide, thank you. My colleague Catherine Mud reported to committee in June about our approach to the Play Zones Programme, which is a Football Foundation programme to create multi-sports sites. We're progressing with a test and learn approach there, looking at one local authority site, Ecclesfield Park, and one non-local authority site, which is Jubilee Sports Ground. We've just completed the community consultation on that, which has been broadly supportive of those two sites. So my colleagues are currently preparing a community engagement report, which will be submitted with the full application for Play Zones. And we hope if successful, that would deliver those two sites in twenty twenty four. And we've then got three kind of smaller scale projects in Darnall, which we have section one O six funding available for. Mother Road, you may know that the playgrounds recently been completed on site by Parks and Countryside. We've also got some section O six funding specifically for sport on the sites. We've been carrying out some local consultation to understand what users want in terms of improvements to sports facilities. We'll be reviewing that consultation and then preparing an initial business case once that's complete and potentially the site is suitable for a Football Foundation application, depending on where the priorities are. We're also carrying out feasibility work at the moment at Tinsley Green on the open access kickabout court on that site. We are looking at resurfacing the court, it's in much need of resurfacing. But we're also looking at cost options to see whether we can install different surfacing and widen sports use, because currently it's a carpet, which is really only suitable for football. So we're looking at whether we can widen the sports use there as well. And we'll be taking those cost options for discussion back to the lack and local members in October. And then doing some local consultation around those options and hopefully delivering that in twenty twenty four. And that work will help us maintain the green flag standard at Tinsley Green as well. Next slide, please. The third Darnall site is Collaridge Road Pitch, which is a playing pitch site and has section one O six funding also available for carrying out some improvements to the playing surface. We're working quite closely with Darnall Diamonds on that site, which is a club wanting to improve the site. Looking at developing a proposal that would include improvements to the pitches, including drainage work, fencing and possibly changing provision as well. So the next step with that one is to carry out some local consultation, which will be launched shortly. And again, that's another site potentially that we can put in for a Football Foundation application to match the funding we do have available. We've then got two sites within the south west of the city. One is Bent Screen Playing Field, where we are doing some early feasibility works to look at the disused pavilion on the site and whether either a refurbishment or rebuild of that facility might be possible. Also looking at kind of wider site improvements to improve access from the different car parks and potentially the layout of some of the car parks, just to improve site safety. We're working with a range of partners, including cricket and football clubs on that site and also Work Limited, who run the Chin and Gem Cafe and the Local Scout Group. So we are in the process of kind of starting to draw up surveys, designs and cost estimates for that, which will be done in consultation with the stakeholder group. And again, a Football Foundation application is a possibility on that site as well. Sorry, you're ahead of me on this one. Totley Bent Recreation Ground. We have funding from the loss of some cricket facilities on Black Lane Sports Ground in Loxley that specifically needs to be spent on Totley Bent Recreation Ground to create a new non-terf cricket pitch. Alongside this, we'll be doing some improvements to the grass cricket wickets on the site, which will be starting kind of October, November time, with the non-terf cricket pitch being constructed in February, kind of March two thousand and twenty four. And again, we're working with the Yorkshire Cricket Board and Club on that project. The, I've got, in the report, I refer to Stocksbridge as well and the Sports Hub up there and the fact that our team are supporting with some of the developments led by the Stocksbridge Town Fund, looking at three G pitch, accessing change and toilet facility improvements at the Stocksbridge Park Steels Ground, a new cricket pavilion and also accessing improvements at Rugby Club. Some of those are non-local authority sites. We are just working there to kind of support those and working with the Football Foundation as well, who the three G pitch is a priority for. So they would be able to provide match funding up there to the town's funding. And the final one I've got on the slides is Walsley Park Village improvements, where again, we're supporting the Friends Group with costs for feasibility work. Parks and Countryside carried out some improvements, installing goals at Gold End and doing, Gold End, sorry, and doing some drainage work funded by Bradfield Parish Council and the LAC, the North Lac. But the surface itself needs resurfacing and the Friends Group are very keen to do kind of wider improvements. So we're working closely with them on that and supporting them with their fundraising. Apologies that my slides seem to have all gone slightly wrong when they've been put on. The, sorry, they were spread out, so you could see them. So apologies for that, but you have got some faces in your report. So hopefully that means you've been able to see those. Yes, I can circulate that afterwards, the non-confused version. Right. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I'll take questions and comments. Councillor Danny.
Yeah, thank you. This is very encouraging to see all these new sporting facilities being put in place and working with partners like the Football Foundation and people like that. Sheffield, the home of football, it makes you wonder sometimes when you think about the two professional clubs in Sheffield. You know, but anyway, that's another, that's another story. And we're just interested in what is a Cruyff Court? I know Johan Cruyff was, or is, is he was, is. But what is the, what is the, is it just his name that they're using?
Yeah, it's a fund that he set up, but it's a very specific specification in terms of high quality surfacing for football and the right kind of, they've had Johan Cruyff branding, as was in the slide that was shown. It's a particular look that it has and it's a key that it's an open access court that anyone can come and use at any time. But yeah, it will really improve the playing surface quality and it's kind of very specific in what it needs in terms of lighting and fencing to give an open access court that is accessible to all the community. Yeah.
Councillor Masters.
Thank you, Chair, but that was my question. So well, I'll make a comment that I'm really pleased that finally action's been taken on the Bent Screen site. And you've mentioned parking, which is a huge issue in that area, the associated problems. So I'm looking forward to seeing how that develops. Thank you.
Thank you.
Alan Hooper.
Thank you, Chair. Thanks, Kate, for the presentation. In particular, the Play Zones and the Ecclesfield one. Really pleased to see it's progressing where it is. Could I suggest that Josh comes to one of our like meetings and gets involved with the parish? Because perhaps we can increase this project by joining him with however far he's got. It's really good to see how they're progressing and it's really good for Ecclesfield Park, which for a long time now, since the loss of the pavilion and the facilities, has been a bit of a wilderness, but there is a move now to get that park up and running and get it to a vibrant park again. Thank you.
Yeah, I think what I didn't say as part of that update, I think was in my report, is that obviously Parks and Countryside have also been working on the playground improvements, tennis court improvements on that site and continue to progress improvements. And I know they're also looking at potential cafe, you know, possibilities for cafe and toilet facilities there as well. All of which kind of alongside our Play Zones improvements will contribute to creating an active park, which is a kind of destination site with facilities and activities for all ages and abilities. So yeah, I think it'll be a really important part of the mix that we improved there at Ecclesfield. And yeah, I'm sure Josh would be very happy to come along. He's been doing a really brilliant job with the consultation with Play Zones. He's done a lot of activities going out and talking to groups. So yeah, I'm sure he'd like to come and update you on that as well.
Yeah, yeah, thank you. Because of the nature of the play zone and possible floodlights, will it have to go through a planning procedure?
It will need planning permission submitted, but we have had sort of very initial discussions and we don't foresee any difficulties with that in terms of the location and the fact that there's current facilities there.
Just to add to that, Chair, as well, that Josh is a development officer in the Sport and Physical Activity Team, just in case anyone was wondering who Josh was, if they haven't worked with him. He's part of our Sport and Physical Activity Team.
Thank you for that. Councillor Little.
Yes, thank you for the report. It's very encouraging to see this happening. Will this project be continuing into next year and into the future? What's going to happen? I'm, yes, yes.
Which project?
Well, the project, the project you're involved with is actually rolling out this programme.
Yes, yeah, I mean, it's a kind of programme of projects, I suppose. Our team is involved in alongside the larger kind of a leisure centre refurbishment project. These are the smaller capital projects that our project team get involved in the delivery of. So yeah, it's a sort of continual programme really, as we secure funding. That will, yeah, the team will continue to work on that.
And how far ahead does a local bid for a football pitch resurfacing or equipment need to put in?
It takes, it's quite a long process in terms of, it can be kind of a year in terms of, because with a lot of the projects, there's feasibility work and then obviously the development and the final application. What we've discussed with the Football Foundation previously is around a portfolio approach to our pitch and ancillary facilities project. So that's what we're discussing with them at the moment and how we stagger those applications going forward. But they are kind of supportive of that portfolio approach as we move forward.
I've got, we've got particular concerns about some facilities where, which are sort of restricted areas, as it were, which we quite understand them needing for that standard football pitch. But there are other areas where it's just a kickabout place for informal games, as it were. And I, you know, I'm particularly looking at, for example, the Ponderosa resurfacing that pitch, which is, I've got, had lots of approaches from local people about the need to resurface that. Plus Ruskin Park has got, the goalposts have actually rotted and it's going to create problems for the next season. And finally, my final question is about women's football. Are there any particular areas in the city where women are gathering to play football? And are there any issues there that we need, that we need to think ahead about?
In terms of the women's football, there are no specific areas where people are gathering to play football. But as working with, for instance, Sheffield Wednesday Community Partnership, Sheffield United Community Partnership, they work with young people, so regardless of the gender. So we're not working specifically with male or female clubs, we're working across the board. So that's the answer to that one in terms of Ruskin and Ponderosa. Do you want to take those, Kate?
Yes, I think I'm kind of aware that Parks and Countryside have been quite involved in those. A lot of the Football Foundation projects that we're looking at are part of the playing pitch strategy. When we've got kind of smaller scale projects where it's ball courts resurfacing, things like Walsley Park Village or Tinsley Green, then obviously we look to kind of source other types of funding if necessary. So those, I know the Ponderosa one particularly is one that's come up in consultation that Luke Wilson in Parks, I think, has done before. So we can have a discussion with them and see where that's got to and feedback to you on those ones specifically. The other thing to say is in terms of a lot of our. Yes, I mean, yeah, that kind of links through, sorry, back to the other question around the women's Euros legacy. A lot of the clubs now are trying to widen participation and have got, you know, A lot of the clubs now are trying to widen participation and have got, you know, obviously they've got demand for more women's provision and women's teams. So that is something that we want to support through the delivery of improvements to the quality of pitches. So they can have more kind of games and teams playing as they develop and also providing those new facilities at places like Bent Screen would allow those clubs to grow and have more, yeah, space. I think, yeah, some of the projects we're looking at, like for example with Burn Road, we're reconfiguring those changing rooms where they were not cubicles and now we're providing separate changing facilities so we can cater for both the women's and the men's team.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. And is there any other questions or comments? Now, before we go to the vote, I just would like to say it's good to see Wadsey Park pitch improvements on your radar, being totally parochial. I know the residents of Wadsey Park Village often feel a little bit neglected and that actually is, is a, it could be a fantastic facility for young people. So thank you for that. The recommendation is that the Communities, Parks and Leisure Policy Committee is asked to note the contents of this report and that the further updates and decisions where required on these projects will be taken to the appropriate committee as required. Is that agreed? Okay, that's unanimous. Thank you very much. Our final item today is item 13, which is tram lines update. There is an appendix, which is a closed appendix. I'm going to ask members here, are you minded to delve into that or are you just going to listen to the main report? Any thoughts? Just the main report? Okay, in that case.
Thanks, Chair. So I'm Lisa Firth, I'm the Director of Parks, Leisure and Libraries. Briefing report provided for you today on the tram lines festival. And the purpose of the report is to brief you as a committee on the issues that we encountered in 2023 in Hillsborough Park, which are well documented, and also give you a summary of the, the debriefing learnings from this year's festival so far. We continue to learn and also confirmation of the arrangements for 2024. So assuming that you've managed to have a look at the report, I'll not go through it verbatim, but just a couple of specific points that I'll draw your attention to. 1.1, which is the background to the report, gives you an overview of events and why they're important to Sheffield as a city. And there will be a further report going to the Economic Development and Skills Committee in November specifically around events and our approach to them as a city. At 1.2 in the report, on the third paragraph, which I think is page 83 of your, of your report, I wanted to point out that there, there has been some suggestions that tram lines has changed significantly since it moved to Hillsborough Park and that now it's a ticketed event and it's no longer free and that that's taken something away from the event when it used to be held in the city centre. I'm really keen to point out that there is still the Fringe at Tram Lines that happens the same weekend as the festival in Hillsborough Park. It takes place over the weekend, it has live stages, outdoor spaces across the city centre. And in 2023, over 40 venues in the city centre took, took part in the Fringe at Tram Lines. And we think that about 40,000 people attended. So there is still that free event happening in the city. On page 84 of your report, still in section 1.2, I refer to the economic impact assessment and the comparators to the council's economic impact assessment and the one that was produced by tram lines themselves by, in conjunction with a company called Bluegrass. And as a local authority, we use a UK Sport and DCMS Events Impact Modeling Toolkit across all of our events programmes. So Gary and his team use this tool to, to provide an economic impact assessment on all our major events. There are significant differences between that impact assessment tool that we use as a local authority and the ones that we use by tram lines. And there are also some factors when you look at events such as the Victoria Festival in Portsmouth, where there are comparators being drawn between the Victorious Festival and Tram Lines Festival. There are significant differences and therefore we don't think that you can draw immediate comparisons between the two and therefore compare their economic impact assessment as, 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 as being set out. We think that there's approximately 50%, sorry, Portsmouth is about 50% larger than tram lines and it has more unique day visitors to the festival. So whereas 80% of tram lines guests are weekend ticket holders, that, that has an impact on the economic impact of, of the, of the festival. At 1.6 of the report, which is on page 86, and as Chair, you've just pointed out, there is a closed appendix with a little bit more detail about the tram lines fees. The last tram lines fee, which was published, was in 2021 and that was a fee of 33,500. It has increased since then. The fee is negotiated on a commercial basis and in consideration of other similar events, both within Sheffield and outside of the city as well. We can't disclose the current fee publicly because following a Freedom of Information request at the end of 2022 and then a discussion with the Information Commissioners Officer in January 2023, it was established that that information is commercially sensitive to tram lines because it also includes, it's around the very competitive festival market and it also includes the pricing of their tickets and their costs and expertise. And so the Information Commission Officer decided that that information is commercially sensitive. 1.7, which is on page 87 of your report, I've tried to set out here an answer to the question of why does tram lines need to be held in Hillsborough Park? Why can't it be held in other parks across the city? And I've listed some of the parks that have been suggested, such as Graves Park, Norfolk Park and the Don Valley Bowl, all of which don't have the capacity to hold the festival there. And then most recently, in the local press, there's been a suggestion that a combination of venues in Attair Cliff, so Don Valley Bowl, the arena and the Arena Car Park could be explored as a multi, multi-venue site for tram lines. Unfortunately, whilst the Arena Car Park does hold 22,000 people estimated, that is not enough for a main stage headline act festival. We think between 30 and 35,000 people actually go to the main stage headliners. And so we wouldn't have the capacity at the arena to be able to do that. There are also impacts that we would need to include on I Sheffield and EISS, the English Institute of Sports, sorry, at the same weekend. Also with the arena being an indoor venue, there are also different considerations for getting people in and out of an indoor venue that are different to those in an outside venue. So we've tried to set that out here, that we will look into that a little bit further, but we don't believe that's a feasible option currently. And at section 1.8, I come on to set out what happened with the weather in 2023, which again, we're all well versed with. I've stated here that the, the weather in July, the rainfall was one of the heaviest rainfalls on record for July in the city. The weather forecast was regularly changing over that weekend and so information was collected through various channels, not just through BBC Weather. We use several weather forecasting sites alongside colleagues at tram lines to try and build up an overall picture of how the weather was currently and how it was due to change over that weekend. We worked extremely hard to try and prepare the ground, both the tram lines teams and colleagues in the events team and in Gary's team and in Ruth's Parks and Countryside team, to try and ensure that the event could proceed safely, both up to the event and actually during that event weekend. The decision whether to cancel an event is complex. It doesn't sit completely with the event organiser and it doesn't sit completely with the local authority either. And so particularly Gary and myself over that weekend had many conversations with colleagues at tram lines. And in the context of that, those discussions, the final decision does lie with the event organiser in, in conjunction with those. And on the Sunday, particularly around 11am, the weather forecast changed and the decision was made to, to continue with the festival after it had been delayed and then the weather deteriorated. And that is something that we will take forward in the learnings for, for coming years. So concluding in, in the report, all the, all the learnings and the mitigations, there, there needs, there is a commitment in this report and you'll have seen it in the press and media releases, we have given a commitment to both Hillsborough residents, elected members, ward councillors, committee members, LACs, that this cannot happen again. We can't allow this level of damage to the main field of Hillsborough Park in future. So the conversations that we need to have with tram lines, the first of which is scheduled for next week, is how do we prevent that happening again? There are some obvious mitigations, the ground, you know, protecting the ground, but how actually would that happen in reality and is it feasible to do that? We need to get into those conversations in detail now that this park is beginning to recover. So what we have done over the last few weeks is concentrate on getting the park, getting that grass to grow, getting it back open as quickly as possible so that we can then start to have the conversations about how we stop it happening again. There's another point that we have been considering is about how many large music events are sustainable in Hillsborough Park. And so in 2023, we had the Arctic Monkeys play at the beginning of June. If the weather had been the same at the beginning of June as it was during tram lines, that would probably have prevented tram lines from happening. And even though we'd left what we thought was sufficient space between the events six or seven weeks, we, we've seen from tram lines this year that the ground hasn't recovered sufficiently during that time. So that is something that we need to consider, how we can do that. One of the other questions is around whether tram lines dates can move so that if, if damage does occur to the park, then the main field would remain accessible during summer holidays, because that's been one of the main issues this year. The field has been off, off limits for the summer holidays. We are limited, we're limited by the football season, both the close of season and the start of the new season, because tram lines can't happen at the same time as a Sheffield Wednesday game. The fixtures aren't released in, in time for us to make those decisions early enough. And so we are going to talk to tram lines. There might be some feasibility that we can move it by a couple of weeks, but not much, but we will have those conversations as well. So 2024, you will have seen as already that we, that we have given a commitment to tram lines as we do each year, that as long as they meet their obligations to restore the park, which they are doing at their own cost, which they are doing, then they can put the tickets on sale for the, for the coming year, which they do the day after the festival. So we have to, we have to give them that commitment pretty early on and we're happy to do so for next year, subject to all the learnings that I've set out. There was a question at the Economic Development and Skills Committee about the, the licence application fee and that's set out in the report. We can tell you that, that's not commercially sensitive, that is a standard licence application, which is £70. And then for the larger scale events, there is a multiplayer fee added, dependent on the scale of the event. And that means that tram lines pay an £8,070 licence fee each year. And that fee has to be retained by the council's licensing service. That is not a fee that goes to Hillsborough Park. Other than that, I think that's pretty much a summary of what's in the report.
Okay, thank you very much. Got a number of people indicating they'd like to ask questions or comments. I'll start with you, councillor Downing.
Thank you, Chair. I don't know what plans or thoughts you've had mitigating for the, for the damage to the, the green space. Obviously tram lines is a very successful thing that we have in Sheffield and it would be a shame to see that anything happened to that. But what kind of things are you thinking about to mitigate the, the, the damage to the, to the ground? Can it be covered in, in areas? Yeah, please, thank you, Chair.
So yes, it can be covered and it was covered. The type of covering is important and I'm going to start to talk about things here and get out of my depth, so I'm going to look at my colleagues in a minute. But it was covered and unfortunately what happened this year is the covering made the mud worse, the impact worse, because obviously it covered so that it was safe, but the, the ground underneath was soaked and that created the mud and that further created some of the issues in terms of repairing the park after the event. So there are different types of ground covering, Gary?
Yes, there are. There's something called roller track, which is kind of lightweight duty trackway that you can put on the grass, you can see them on football pitches for music events. It's very laborious putting those down, it's very laborious taking them up, they are costly. So they do offer some level of protection. And I, I think, if I'm honest, I think it'll be a mix of, one of the things we learnt this year, and this is the truth of it, we learnt what the site can and can't do in such weather because we'd never experienced it before. And that, and that's the honest truth. None of us had, either the council team or the, or the, or the tram lines team. And the way people traverse across the five, these five stages, so people are moving constantly from stage to stage. So actually the damage was feet, not, not vehicles or rain in particular, it was feet on the rain. So it was people traversing across. So I think that the trick for us now is we've learnt what the site can and can't handle and we need to look at the walkways, for want of a better phrase, that, that mitigate some of that damage. We can't cover the whole site because it, it wouldn't work. We'd be, we'd start now, is the truth of it. It's such a vast site and it, and it wouldn't give it the protection that it, that it absolutely needs. So it's, it's looking at the critical areas and looking at what's practical and what's not practical. There's other stuff called turan, which is, it's like a tent canvas, for want of a better phrase, that's relatively lightweight, six metres wide, 50 metres long. That, that offers quite a lot of protection as well, which is easier than, than the, the trackway that we talked around. So there's a number of things that we talked about with tram lines.
Councillor Elliott.
Thank you, Chair, thank you, Lisa. I mean firstly, it's really clear that tram lines has evolved into a very different event from the free festival that Sarah had also started. And I think tram lines, the owners of tram lines are backed by a private equity firm. So it's clearly a very different model now from what it used to be. But in light of that and the impact on Hillsborough Park and the likelihood of extreme weather due to climate change, yeah, in terms of the agreement between the council and tram lines really does need to be reviewed, so I'm glad that's happening. So I've got two questions. As we heard from the petitioner at the beginning of the meeting, the main grass areas are still inaccessible. And at 1.9 of the report, where it refers to the impact on the park, it states that the main field has been reseeded and that regrowth has been slow. So was turf considered? I mean, I recognise that that's going to be more expensive and require more maintenance, but surely that'd be worth it to restore the park more quickly if it was at tram line's expense, of course.
Yeah, we'll actually hand that over to Ruth, I'll just pick up. The main, the main field in, in tram lines, the main stage area has been the area that's been most affected. A lot of the other grass areas around the lake, the pump track and, and the hard surfacing was open almost immediately after tram lines closed. In fact, it was open on the Monday. We have had a public question around turf versus seeding. I'm going to ask Ruth to answer, if that's all right, councillor Elliott.
And so this year, we, we chose to reseed because we felt it was the better option. But I think we have learned some lessons from this year and, and how long it is taking for the grass to grow back. Obviously the weather has, has had, has had an impact. We've suddenly had all the dry weather that we didn't get through the summer. Had we re-turfed the entire field, the amount of water that it would have taken to, to have that take would have been significant and would have been a whole other impact in itself. It, it would have been very difficult to keep that field as watered as it would need to be for turf to grow well. That being said, I think we're all clear that were this to happen again, and, and we are clear that it cannot and will not, but, but were we to be talking about a level of, a level of damage that required either a, a, a big reseed or a, or a re-turfing? We would look at turfing in particular the edges because that's something that on reflection we do wish we had done this year. We, we went for the, the single model of, of reseeding and actually a mixed model of reseeding the main area with some turfing around the edges would, we think, have probably been a better model. So, so there's learning there for us.
Great, that's really good to hear. It sounds like it'd be difficult but not impossible. So I hope that's an option. And then the other thing.
So I hope that's an option. And then the other thing, at 1.9, it says the council's working with a preferred contractor to monitor the restoration. So who's paying for that contractor? Is that the council or tram lines?
Okay. Do we have any other questions? Councillor Hooper?
Comment really rather than questions. Firstly, about 1.7, why Hillsborough Park? You mentioned the access to town walking, et cetera. My experience picking young people up and taking them down from the north was very good on all three days. And it does disperse very quickly, up the A61 and back onto the motorway. So anybody going north, Leeds and beyond, yeah, it's good. As regards on the Sunday, when it was really bad, I got a phone call sort of tea time rather than late, later, 10 o'clock, 11 o'clock. And the crowd was dispersing very good. A lot of them were leaving early. The road conditions and the rain on the road, I've never seen it as bad. It was just a river. The A62 was actually a river going down. So it did disperse. And I think if, like Barbara said, if they had to call it off at some stage, I'm not sure how the crowd would have reacted when you've got 30 odd, 40,000 people in there, getting them out safely. And a lot of them were younger people and families and their safety is really very paramount. But I think all in all, apart from the grass, the event was successful. Again, my grandson was in there. I'm not sure if it was the tram lines or the Arctic Monkeys, but he stood against and talking to a family from New York and they'd come especially over to New York. So when you get things like that happening and it's Sheffield, it's really good. So apart from the rain and the grass, I think we need to look at the positives of what we get. And people will come. The issue when you show the graph and the surveys and the results of them, 95% of people want to come back. Yeah. So, yeah, we just need to get that grass situation sorted out. And again, I think the weather's been against us with the laying of the grass and the dry spells and then the rain, you know, it's not what grass wants. It just wants a constant moisture, not a deluge and then drought. But thank you very much. Thank you.
And councillor Hooper, one of the most difficult elements of making that decision was that cancellation. I mean, we didn't have a crystal ball. We didn't know the significant impact on that main field. But I think by the time we came to talking to tram lines about making the decision around cancelling, I think the damage had pretty much been done by the Sunday lunchtime and there were already people then waiting to come into the venue. And that's why I've said that it was a very, it's a complex and difficult decision. We had advised it was safe to go ahead because of the mitigations that had been put in place underfoot. So the stroll and the ground covering made the event safe. It was then the damage to the park surface which had been done by that point. So it was a difficult decision and one that I hope myself and Gary, you know, don't have to think about again. You know, I can't say we won't, but I just hope that, you know, with the learnings, and unfortunately, it is only by experiencing these things that we do learn to this extent. And it was extreme. So I hope it doesn't happen again. But we definitely have a lot of learning to take away from this year.
Would you like to make an observation?
Just to back up Lisa and councillor Hooper's comment, the thing that was interesting all weekend were the people that came to the festival. Yes, they came for a good time. Yes, they came in their thousands. But they came prepared. They were very sensible about what they were doing. They entered the site in a proper orderly fashion. They left the site in a proper orderly fashion. They understood and recognised the conditions and helped us greatly because it is any big events are a concern. So they were exceptionally good at being good customers, if that makes sense. So, yeah, it was difficult. Lisa's right, you know, coming 11 o'clock on that Sunday, it is difficult, isn't it? It had stopped. We thought it was okay. There were thousands of people waiting to come in, literally thousands of people waiting to come in. So you're kind of like, well, what do we tell all these people that are here? So it was, yeah, it was an interesting weekend.
It was a safety question.
Absolutely. And the site was safe. The site was safe. And, yeah, it was, but, yeah, they were, members of the public were extremely supportive and helpful and respectful of what was happening.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions or comments? Oh, sorry, Bernard.
Thank you for your report. Weather variability, severity and frequency will continue to increase as we experience the impact of climate change. It may accelerate and it looks like the scientific evidence points in that way. There surely will come a point where the predictability of the cost of staging events like this will become prohibitive. Is this longer term uncertainty being planned for, particularly for example, when we think about the cost of insurance across the whole city?
Okay, so there's two points, I think, there councillor Elliot. The costs, there are no costs of that uncertainty to the local authority. Those costs, the cost of repairing, the cost of insurance all sit with the event organiser. So tram lines or any other events, whether it be Arctic Monkeys or the fair, whatever the event is in a park, those costs are borne by the event organiser. So for our part of that question, it's looking after the ground and looking after the park and making sure we can get it open as quickly as possible. I'm not sure it could rain any more than it did that weekend in July. I really don't. I think it may happen more often. I'm pretty sure it can't rain anymore. We have to make sure that we can protect the ground in that eventuality. But all costs are covered by tram lines or any event.
Thank you.
Thank you and thank you for your reports. If there's no other questions, I'd just like to make a few brief observations. I think what comes out is that nobody was happy at all. Clearly, the residents of Hillsborough weren't happy, friends of Hillsborough Park weren't happy, the officers weren't happy. As councillors, I'm sure we weren't happy and I'm sure tram lines weren't happy. What's come out of the report is that lessons have been learnt and will continue to be learnt. And the single message, almost like a stick of rock, is this can't happen again. Now, those words have got to run right through that stick of rock. The other observation I would make is that I'm not sure it's helped or it's hindered, the fact that tram lines falls across a number of different committees. And I think that's something we have to look at going forward. And I raised that because I had correspondence on that question. So that's something we will be looking at. In that case, I'd like to go to the vote and the recommendation is the Communities, Parks and Leisure Policy Committee is asked to note the contents of the report and that the further updates and decisions where required. On events, the tram lines festival will be taken to the appropriate committee as required. Is that agreed? Is that unanimous? Yeah, thank you very much. That concludes our agenda today. Just to note, the next meeting of this committee will be at 2 o'clock on Monday, the 13th of November, 2023. Thank you for your time.